Can I have a motion on this?
Definitely.
Can we accept the consent agenda as written?
A second?
Okay. For announcements, we have two notices of meetings. The first is a public hearing for the 2020 amendments to the land use ordinance regarding the official land use ordinance district and overlay zone map and related text, and the 2020 amendments to the land use ordinance and the development review ordinance to make miscellaneous numbering formatting and typographical error corrections. And that meeting will be Thursday, August 20th, 2020, at 6:00 at the Westbach Tire Hall. The second is the announcement of the annual town budget meeting to be held Thursday, September 3rd, 2020, at 6:00 at the Bath Middle School. Does anybody have any other comments? Announcements and so on.
Are we going to talk about adding the... Any more public comments?
We could do that. We could do it under other ideas.
Okay. I will hold off till then. Okay. Business item number one, the Sabino... Oh, it's not a notice, public comments, sorry.
I put it at the end.
Okay. We could have public comments now if you wish.
Are you going to put that, the dates for the pre-planning meeting, the third and the other one, in the newspaper? And particularly the one that's going to be at the Bath Middle School?
Yes, we always advertise town meeting. Christine, you're taking care of the public hearing? Or should I include that in my town meeting notices?
How about one notice? Would that work? Instead of having two separate ones, have one that includes the hearing and town meeting?
If it makes, if it makes the legal...
Fire pitch, that's how we've done it in the past.
To do it, to do both of them at the same time.
So yes, that'll be advertised in town records, of course, always on our website and listed.
Yes, it is a little out of order. Like so many things.
Yes.
Now, business item number one, the Sabino Road replacement change order. You have the materials in your packet showing what the change order is. Materials that we have. Concerns that spoke of work proposed by the road commissioner, Hi Steve, on the third, as we discovered what the issues are, and the change order information that you have includes all the additional charges to date. Those are on the second page.
So we have a meeting on...
August 3rd. I've got to talk about... Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, this says 27,100.
The other 12,550, apparently, all in concrete. In both, reset the facts and...
So that's for taking care of my...
Yeah, and you'll see there on the second page, down at the bottom, it has the 12,5 separate...
Okay, thank you.
The 1,000 yards of...
I just didn't want to have to come back.
Right. Right. And at this point, you don't expect any additional change orders?
As much as I know. Everything went really well today. We actually dug two footers in and 10 feet of cowl in, and everything was nice and great. What we did worked. We probably made some enemies, but people probably did not like us. But there was no other way of doing it than doing that. In fact, we worked this afternoon on giving up on us on the Saturday. And so I think some people had to wait a little longer than they probably should have. I apologized to anyone that had problems with that, but it was a tough job. We almost lost a duck truck. It had always been sitting there loading it, and the two wheels come right off the ground, and she was going over, and I caught it, the excavator, pushed it back up, pushed it over. Almost lost an excavator. One of the worst jobs I've seen in 20 years doing this.
And the hard part of it by this point?
It's all this. We were looking pretty good.
It's not all over. There's still stuff to do, or it's done? The hard part, okay.
The mud's all around. We know all mud, and all mud on the roads. It was just so sloppy. It's like taking, okay, take 2,000 gallon of water, stick it in the back of your head and just like, just like paint, a little slop, go over it, and it was running out of the air, and we tried everything, but it just... Luckily, we had a gentleman that told us we could dump the air alive. That was the same with us.
Well, we were also against a gun with a storm coming in. We had no idea what that torrential rain was going to operate to, so it...
We had a lot of luck on our side. It's like, it really made us.
And we were fortunate that we didn't get an inch of rain that was projected.
But if anybody wants an idea of what it's going to look like, we do have 10 feet of cowl all together, sitting there, you know? It's probably five times bigger than the one that was in there. It's a good system.
That's good. Sounds like all you men.
So like I spoke the other many nights, the rest of the road is probably going to be maintained for the rest of its life, but it's sinking. This section that you cowl it and all your important stuff is, structures, will not move. We dug it right down to the ledge, we compacted it all the way back, got 14 feet deep worth of it. So, and put the geofabric, pearly as... So we'll never have a problem through that. I guarantee that as long as...
Even beavers?
Beaver will have to work for that one out. 17 feet wide.
Beaver condo.
That'll be a hotel.
Wait for it.
We can call the warden before he gets the condo bid on that beaver. Yeah?
We put that two down there to have it in back.
So I just want to say again, because a lot of what happens, unfortunately for all of us, is we don't hear about the bad stuff we do, and we don't hear about the good stuff. So, so thank you. I know this was not easy, and we appreciate parting down.
Well, thank you, because my crew and work, the months are, they're up there 85 degrees, 90 degrees days, getting yelled at by everybody. I don't think anybody has any patience down there. We're the bad guys. Trying to fix that road so it don't flood and they can get in and out, and we just... It's like we didn't get anybody at all.
I didn't yell.
You know?
But I think it's society right now, everybody's trust in...
Oh yeah, it's like a virus and everything else, and, you know? By a nice way, the longest person, anyone or two who had to wait was probably 10 minutes. We get out there, the big piece of equipment, we're trying to set stop, and we had to dig out the road because you had to be careful because the road would just give out. All of a sudden it would drop six feet, and all of a sudden the ditch would go up six feet, and it was...
Wow. Did you have a film crew there?
Do, you want to see pictures?
Christine, I saw it. And right after we saw it, I remember there was a fire truck, two fire trucks went over that. If you do have pictures...
Yes, and I would like to fight, need to thank the fire trucks too. But this is a little bit bigger thing then. There's a trench wall, we had to put steel side by side, it's indeed feet tall. It's not weird or swampy or... So this is not probably what we were going to do today, except for...
Steve, could you send that, Dick Carlyle and her...
I know the web. Yes, and I'd like to, that's spread in the town report next year. It's historic.
Oh yeah, that's a great...
Land pictures from the...
The picture, the picture.
And yeah, the...
Thank you. So the pictures will be posted?
It might get, some of the people down there realize, well, they all know, they can see it, it's like, oh my god, this is like...
Yeah, but they didn't see it at the, at the virgin components, there were so pieces that, you know? It's like the problem was having a storm, that we didn't know what that was going to, how big the part was going to be.
Isn't it good when other people in town question, what did you do down there, and then you're down there, and then you've got to show this?
Just ask them to be patient down there.
Yeah. We'll send David down if you want.
Oh, down, don't be patient.
Okay, this has been a long time coming. It only takes a few weeks to get done, then we're good. What is completion if you involve art?
I'd say, well, I'd say it's about another three weeks, I mean, that. I had to sand, I had, something like that.
Do you have a November September report? Do you have a town that gives September reports?
I have a question. What kind of research did you do before you put your bid in on this job?
We, we had drilling from SW Gold.
Yeah?
And we all made mistakes, fought...
Did they drill where you were going to do the majority of your work?
They did. What happened was they built the whole road, well, 10 years ago, which is planning on fixing the whole road. And it was just, they came up with a price 10 years ago of 1.3 million dollars, and we had worked a lot. And then we just, we know we needed a cowl in there to keep flooding. So we do that, so they took the drawings, the plans that I studied, cold bit, down through there, there was ledge on this side of the cowl, and then it was 72 feet deep on the other side. So we just had to hope that we, the ledge would go down slowly, which it did. So what we had to do was remove seven feet of that slop off the ledge, get down the solid bits.
Right, well, my question is, shouldn't there have been some test boards done where the majority of the work was going to be at that cowl? And then you would have known there was 10 feet of muck there.
Yep. When they do test board, they do it every 10 feet.
And the road is only 20 feet wide, so there should have been one in there somewhere.
Like those. There was. And one hit ledge, and the next one hit 72 feet deep. We knew there was something there, but we didn't know what it was. That's why we had a special cowl design for the footers, because the footers down first. And we got there, we didn't know we were dealing, we thought we were dealing with, you know, hard clay, but not marine, some paint clay.
Yeah, I know, I drove through it a couple times, so I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I've all done it, we got some...
I just, I'm a retired businessman, and every time I put a bid in on a, I did my homework, and if I got the contract and I ran over a little bit, I hate it, you're coming back for another 40,000, which, if you ask me, it's neglect on your part by not anticipating what was going to be there.
Well, I don't know what you did to business, sir. No, I, my hand, that was 14 feet. It is also... All I can do is go by...
A test board would have shown you.
You want to see the test boards in here? Good one, offer.
I guess I'm missing something here.
Is there, is there a difference between what the town would pay for for test boards or what you paid for for test boards? Would that eliminate the, eliminate the job, some, like it says, you knew how much it was going to cost just to do the prep work?
We, right, we went by, by the test boards that were done by the town.
Right.
We didn't know, we didn't think we were going to get into that class.
Right, it was also engineers.
It was all, it was also engineers.
I did all of it.
So should we go after the engineers for misrepresenting what was going on under the ground there?
How would the engineer know?
Test boards.
They would cost more.
They did. What they're saying is they went from about 14 feet to 72, and you had to drill along the pedestrian, test boards.
But the test board should have shown that clay, wet muck.
Excuse me, the test boards were done according to the standard of the industry, and I don't think you can ask for more than that. It doesn't seem reasonable.
I had to go down there twice.
But didn't you say you had a bunch of whatever, wood?
Yep.
All kinds of things that they filled up over here, several different materials. So when they did the test boards, they hit it on the back too.
They were hitting on a little lumber?
Yeah, a little wood.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that...
That came into the test board, we knew there was signs underneath there. We found it for that.
Well, that would have told me that years ago, they put wood in there because dirt wasn't working.
Exactly.
So there was a, there was a problem that was buried.
Yep, and nobody knew what was buried. I was in here 55 years ago down there.
Or 100, when, whenever the Sabino Road was developed, it was developed as a summer?
And kind of right now, the rest of the road will be touched, it will not be dug up or touched.
Great.
Because we know, I'm before you did it, because you better have this type of, I said, maybe I had, I had plans to build it, I did all of it.
So the rest of that swamp area is just going to be leveled off and raised a little bit?
We gotta raise it two feet to match cowl it, and fix the ditch lines. We're going to juke the whole thing.
And knowing that in 10, 15, 20 years, it's going to sink again. I can understand that, I'm just...
We know that.
I'm a little upset that where the majority of this work is going to be done, there wasn't enough, what I would consider, research done. If I had done a test board and found an old pile in, I'd have said, okay, there was something wrong here 50 years ago, we don't know what it is.
Okay, stop right there. So you found that, okay? So you're going to say, wow, geez, that possibly 12 feet of, you guys, I'm sure you are going to put that in there a bit, and add it right up to a great big price, and say, they get it, and have a big, will be able to count, it's going to cost you $500,000 for this stuff in, because I get suspicious. The board is showing it, it's clear, you see, it's...
You got suspicious, but you've come back for another 40,000?
A good amount of that was for materials. A good amount of that was for materials that we could have paid a lot more for. I think that we handled it the most efficient way.
The bid was 358,000?
Yep.
The original bid. So if you knew the clay was there, so you bid $50,000 more, I mean, you're still cutting out around the same number.
I also heard that Ray Labby was like $20,000 less than 300.
You would have eaten long on that, a few thousand extra, and I'll take that.
I think Ray Labby would have eaten it though.
I think you're wrong, dead wrong. I know Ray, what Ray Labby hit.
I know Ray Labby also.
It doesn't matter.
I know Ray Labby hit.
It doesn't matter. The bid was awarded to Mr. Vino, and this is where we are, so...
All I can say is that it was tough, it was not easy, but actually we had to go there. If I would have known that was in there like that, I would probably have added $30,000 with it. And then you guys would have had to talk to somebody else.
Indeed. The, the bid, the bid was what it was, the situation is what it is. That road is built on a swamp, threw a broke. The situation changed, the initial conversations changed as the Army Corps and the DPP got involved. The, I would have guessed that the whole project would have cost half a million dollars. So if we're under that, I personally am satisfied.
I'm just a concerned taxpayer in Westbach. And to answer your question, my father used to be the road commissioner of Brunswick, Maine back in the 50s and 60s, so I am somewhat familiar with road construction. And unanticipated problems like that, I think, could have been seen prior to the first heckle. But that's just my opinion.
I'll give you a little of my history. My grandfather was a road commissioner for the town of Westbach for probably 50 years, and his station was way back then, said cowl it up and talk. Okay? It lasted 50 years, and that's it. Then we had to do this. Times have changed, things have cost a lot more money. If you go $40,000 over a small project like that, and a feasible, good sized project in dirt work and building and structure...
We're adding 40 to 300,000.
Right. So you stop and figure that, you know, state...
258.
Right, and on 258, 40,000 on 258. Would sustain give us 100,000? Okay?
Should we take 100,000 off of this price, or is it, are we at four less hundred?
The total cost of the project right now is 209,585.
Including our 95,000 grant?
Correct.
So, and the other thing also is, because of the grant, we were required to put a particular culvert in, designated by the grant, which eliminated the box culvert, which may have been more successful in this clay, but we would have had a 95,000 grant provided to the town to cover that cost. So in theory...
But they didn't spring that 17-foot cowl on you after you put your bid in, you were, you knew that going in.
It was all engineered.
But we, we had to use that particular culvert design to get the grant? Had we gone to a different design, we would have had...
We did not have to use that to get the grant. In order to get Army Corps of Engineering permission to cross the stream, that's what we had, that's what the particular construction...
Well, my box cowl would have cost you like $2,000, $200,000. I just pulled it down in Pittsburgh, two years ago. I've been here these times, this is the first time I've ever watched a road. I could have said that, I was a little, I was a little stoned for a long day, but hell, I, I fixed it, it was right, maybe over there.
We moved here in 2007, and we've been talking about the Sabino Road ever since, and I know you all have been here longer, have been talking about it longer. I'm grateful it's finally done and done very well, and we can go on to other crises.
Birmingham, the highest case. Oh, I'm pretty sure they did. And I appreciate your coming to the meeting, I appreciate your concern, but we probably should move on. We should approve the change order even though we're, we are incorporating the money through the town meeting on September 3rd.
Do we sign this?
There's one line for a signature. If you move to approve the change order, I can sign it on your behalf, or the chair can sign it, or whatever you prefer.
I move that we approve the change order.
Second? I would do that, second.
I, the five of Christine, second.
All in favor of authorizing the change order and of authorizing Christine's to sign for it, raise your hands.
Thank you, Steve.
It will be...
Thanks. Thank you for coming. It will be nice to not be talking so much about Sabino Road, except as past project.
Yes, Carlyle will have to hear the words swampy.
A question.
Yes.
Steve, do you plan on doing some more here to the rest of the road this year? Is that going to work out?
Yeah, we just did a resurfaced four up over that I wanted.
Oh, I mean, Sabino Road.
That, I want to see what's left, because I like to surface it right from there out through.
Will that include ditching and any cowl replacements?
Yes, we pulled some ditch in, there ain't really much cowl replacement, except for the section we're doing, we'll put in three more new crossings, plastic cowlings.
Okay. So at some point, you know, snow flies, the road should be, Sabino Road should be done?
Yep.
Perfectly. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
And we still got some more hammering to do to get the water to flow in more places, and it's, there's only so much that we can do with our budget per year, and, you know? I wasn't happy that the budget went over $40,000 either, trust me.
Yeah, I would rather see a change order than see an inflated initial bid.
Right.
Or have to come back and do it again.
I mean, a lot of times, people are guessing, and the town doesn't pay a lot more money on their guesswork than actually get into it and find out what's there. It's a 50/50 thing.
And you did on the engineers' plans.
Right. So it could have been, we hit nothing, it went great, or could have been...
We heard something at the last meeting that we need to consider too, is putting in some contingency funds in a big project like that.
Well, yeah, you should always have 10% contingency, anyways, 10%, or $300,000 would have been $30,000. I mean, and 90% of the town do do that. And if you don't, use it greatly.
Right. So we will, we're always learning.
No, the town never did no big projects, that's the problem that we have, that we did the hill road, Aspen Road, that good, we've got the road, our roads completed, we're actually getting...
Yes.
The hill road, we got that, all dicked, all the way down both sides, the water was running great, these couple dits on, we had...
No, we didn't have the frosty in the last one, to be honest.
Oh, no, that's the deal of having an engineer that done great. Now then, if we did have a frosty, we'd go back, say, rock, heat would not, there was, they wanted to build a bunch of pipelines and put steel curbing and everything else across there, it would have been another $300,000. I figured out the way to do this, we basically laid geofabric down, the stuff was so sloppy that it kept coming in, so we lit it down, and we kept putting the weight of the new dirt to it on the ledge, and squeegeed it up. So we blew up one section, and then we laid another piece of fabric, and we kept squeegeeing it up, bailing it up, and a hole we made, and got it down the ledge, it made work. And the I've, I've studied your book, it was very impressive, you come down yesterday and say, oh, it's all right.
It looks good. I mean, it was a little nerve wracking on that Friday before the storm, for all of us, but it came around Tuesday, you guys weren't too bitter and not knowing what the storm was going to hit.
We weren't there, we took them there.
You did, you were, and it helped us to get it done. And, you know, we were lucky that the storm didn't do what it could have done.
Oh, I was very, yeah.
So we caught a break.
I was waiting, waiting for the storm, and I saw the sky at 11 o'clock, and I actually couldn't tell my face. I acted like my mother.
Good old Yankee ingenuity to the rescue, thanks, Steve. Business item number two. The town meeting warrant will be forwarded to the town attorney for initial review on Monday, 8/10. This is an opportunity for the board to discuss proposed appropriations and to consider some additional non-routine items that might be included in the budget. The budget advisory committee will meet Thursday, 8/13, to review the budget and to make recommendations for the warrant. So we have the opportunity to have the, the budget, the warrant reviewed by the town attorney, and then we get to talk about the budget. What do we got? Anything more?
And just as a note, before I forget to mention it, Bill Dale has agreed to moderate. So he's a retired attorney, formerly with Jensen Bear, and he will be moderating the town meeting.
And David, your budget meeting is here?
Yes.
This is a very, very preliminary draft of a warrant. I just started working on it. I'm thinking that it's probably a good idea this year to put some notes on each article.
Many notes.
Many notes.
Yeah, so that people who come to the meeting.
Thank you.
Or who aren't comfortable coming to the meeting, would at least have an opportunity to sort of digest the budget before making their decision whether or not to attend.
Can we, it just occurs to me, is there a way that we could have people ask questions that we could answer as part of the discussion? If a person is unhappy, unable to be at the meeting, could they submit questions that we could include as part of the discussion?
Can we talk about doing a Zoom meeting?
At town meeting, is that what you're referring to?
Beforehand.
Yeah. I would probably have to have somebody help me set that up if it was gonna be via Zoom. I'm not exactly sure how that would work right now. Could we do it? Yeah, I'm sure we could do it.
What I'm hoping, we don't necessarily have to do it by Zoom, but if, for instance, somebody says, Article 3, I'm curious about that. What about such and such? Could they email you or one of us a question so that we could incorporate that into the live discussion?
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
If we, it's important to let people know, I, it just occurs to me, it's important to, for people to know that they can get their questions answered. It may not be the answer that they want, but at least we can provide an explanation for why it was that this number was the one that was suggested and recommended.
Yeah, I think you certainly keep a running list, and I hope people will call the office or email one of you, or whatever they're comfortable doing, so that we can get some questions answered.
Or members of the Budget Advisory Committee.
Yes.
On volunteering, you, David.
I would like to get a draft out, like you said, ahead of town meeting, so people can review it and share concerns. Is that something that we could do, the draft that goes to the attorney on Monday? Or are you thinking after the budget meeting?
After the meeting.
I think we should wait until after the budget committee meeting, because then we'll be sure that the warrant is tightened up and looks the way that most people would like it to appear. And it will also have a budget committee recommendations on it. So I think that's probably a good time.
My only concern is that the selectmen wouldn't have a chance to review it before the next meeting, which they'd be approving it at.
Yeah, they'll have time, because if I don't.
You can bounce it to them individually?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have my dates, because people aren't asking already. Are you gonna be able to see it? So now I can say, after the budget meeting, we'll fill out.
Yeah, so people would have at least, yeah, more than.
Thursday, Thursday. We should perhaps post a comment on the website saying, our plan is to provide the budget for review at this time. We welcome comments until this time, so that we can incorporate that in the discussion.
Yeah, put these up there.
So they can, you know, if they don't wanna comment that, when they get their message heard and not show up, that's a benefit.
And we all know this year is gonna be a bit awkward, but we'll get it done.
Right.
That's what we can. So beginning with Article 2, general government wages, my recommendation is that it be the same as last year. We're not looking for any increases in wages. Probably one note. When the fire chief put his budget together, he did ask for an additional $1,000 for the deputy chief, because he also serves as the training officer. So if you would like me to improve that, I can certainly do that. Or I'll take some piece actually on wages and get it.
So I thought we also, it appears that the fire department, generically, was overlooked on raises for the past three years. Is that accurate?
They have been, but Johnny did not build that into his budget, so I didn't include that one.
And we, I would not, because I think every other person, I believe, did receive a raise other than fire, is that correct?
Yes, I would say yes. We're pretty sure.
We do plan discussing that next Thursday night, as our information goes.
Is that something that you can?
Yeah, I mean, I would like some feedback from the board.
According to Julie, the last raise the fire department members had for the hourly wage or the stipends or whatever, was by 2013, so they're longer overdue.
And just as a note, the stipends appear in a different line.
Yes, it's not in this wage.
It's not in the wages.
But we do plan discussing that next Thursday.
Okay. So the Article 3 increase for insurance and benefits is increased by $6,000.
There's a brief explanation at the bottom that we'd like to change. So it's simply for the additional cost to the main retirement system for the special fire chief program, and then an increase in the cost of health insurance.
And I see it says, selectmen recommend a 30-year.
I just put that in there.
Okay, please.
As a placeholder. But certainly you'll be making your recommendations, probably, I would say, on the 20th before you look at the warrant.
Okay.
Most of the following articles, I haven't gotten around to changing figures yet. So you're seeing, with the exception of the articles that have explanations along with them, you're seeing last year's numbers. I have for Article 4, which includes a computer and technology line, I have a demo that shows a phase-in plan for our vision of improving technology. I'll just hand that out. It's got two sides to it, so you don't miss anything. And you'll see that in Phase 1, we were fortunate to have been able to pay for most of it in last year's budget. So that $22,000 received in Phase 1 has, by and large, already been paid for, with the exception of the battery backups, which our old battery backup died when they were installing equipment. So we had to purchase a new battery backup.
So that's by A2A2.
That's in this year's.
It's okay.
So Phase 2 would include a server, which was quoted by Burgess, some cabling from the code enforcement officer's office to the server, which is currently a wireless connection. For some reason, the cabling isn't working, so we would have to engage an electrician to have that corrected. I'm not sure what that would cost. They recommend upgrading our internet to faster upload and download speed. That will, that's part of what will enable us to work remotely and to log into the server effectively to access Trio and the other programs.
And when was our, the old server purchased? It's fairly new, is it not?
I did look it up, it was fairly new, but it's a desktop. And the initial thought when we engaged Burgess is that we would try to use the old server and see how it functioned. Plus, you wouldn't have been able to purchase the server in last year's budget, we didn't have enough funds. But the desktop isn't a true server. And if we're going to, you know, want to use remote access in the future, then we need something that's more secure. A desktop doesn't offer that kind of security. We need something with a stronger firewall and a more stable. I have tablets for the board of selectmen in Phase 3.
I don't need one for that one.
Yeah, which you might consider for this year or next year, not at all. But I wanted to get a quote for that, so that if you wanted to do your packets on a tablet or, you know, access email, whatever you wanted to do, if you wanted to have tablets, I have a price for that.
That was actually my suggestion, because should there be a legal question about our correspondence? Our town correspondence will, our personal computers, if we're using them at all for any town business, will be subpoenaed.
If we use the westbath dot org email address on a web address platform, it's simply not your computer, but an email platform, and therefore your computers will not be addressed.
But I would give emails to my, you've got, go.
Email from many boards and. Your requested email addresses are those. If you go to your assigned email address from the town email, it then is a web platform.
I know. There's somewhere, and then I can summon that my personal email, so. Well, if at some point you choose to have tablets, just keep in mind that they will remain town property, so they will carry over to future board members. Some board members may not have the proper equipment to handle.
We shouldn't be using personal email addresses anyway, for the town, if it's our town email address.
No, that's true, but this, you know, if you wanted to be able to access a Zoom meeting while you're in meeting, it's helpful to have something available to do that.
We have also had select board members who did not have personal computers, and that also is a concern. So having an option available will probably be a key, by paying. I think the other thing that we should consider, perhaps not this year or next, but in the future, is that members of the select board should have their own town phone on it, because people call us on our personal phones all the time. And again, providing, it should be up to the individual select person how much they wish to call in.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think any communication should be on someone's personal email on behalf of the town. It should be on the town email, because it's stored permanently on the town server and not erasable. It is warehoused and follows the Freedom of Information Act properly. So I think that's what we should be doing.
And there are instances also where people reach out to us using personal email, or we write something on our personal email, and somebody else decides should've been written on the town email. There's no way to, there's no way to make sure that your personal stuff is not involved. So just saying that that was an idea for our own protection.
And then on the flip side, now, there's the, and that includes the Gemini Trio backup that we just purchased, and the code enforcement contract with the others.
And how do they compare to what we had year-over-year for cost?
Well, last year, I found it interesting that we incorporated $30,000 for computer last year. Yeah, it's a little bit skewed because of the additional equipment that we brought. Approximately $20,000.
So the delta is $5,000, not $25,000.
So for the computer line, I would like some feedback as to how this will look and feel about adding in additional funds for, say, the server or the other items listed in the demo.
What are your thoughts on that? I think, personally, I think we need the server. That was, as I recall, an emergency sort of purchase, was probably what was available and what was needed at the time.
Were you, were you? I was, that was only a year and a half ago, and it was an emergency where our server just crashed. But in order to be able to work remotely, you should have, or they had hit out, or snow popped lips, I think, the server. And the way you, it's crucial, because then you take your laptops on.
That would be, you need to be able to keep track of all of this happening. We've had some issues in the past, and we're down some freebies based on having the correct computer system to keep this all up to date, not being, so really, you can save us some money on legal, because we could be losing information or miscovering.
Well, that's a vision.
Right, but I think it all comes together, and we're becoming a bigger town, we're becoming more people employed, and some state requirements, and we need to have the computer software and everything.
So based on what we've acquired already, and we're adding to Q, and with the software upgrades and packages that we've implemented, how are we functioning, are we right at the kind of cost of technology? Are we?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we're almost there. Already where the speed is already better, even without changing our internet speed. And it's more reliable. You don't have to wait for Trio to come up, and you kind of, and it's there. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
It is already more secure. It's just a matter of now, okay, we're there, let's just think a bit further.
But with this, if we do all this, are we there?
Yeah.
Are we complete?
Yeah, and that's why, you know, when I was putting this together, I'm like, well, why are there only three phases? That's why. Because once we hit that point, I think we will have done everything that we will have needed to do, to meet the expectations of the community today.
And the conversion of visions to tax, we only had some issues with that.
Yeah, and that's a whole other step that we need to get into at some point. And I'm hoping it's a serious discussion sometime during this fiscal year, about how we make that transition from being reliant on vision to just working within the trio.
And, because that's the only result that is to eliminate some vision. But what is, so what does that process look like? I'd be curious, I mean, you know, if we start looking at some quotes on conversions, and we can see what our technology picture looks like to transition, not have the errors we've been having this year with visions and some of those calculations. Because we need to know what, if we're expecting a revenue to be a revenue, but it's miscalculated, then we fault shewers it out for our planning purposes. So we really need to.
What that really is, what that looks like, is an RFP for a rebal. And I know that's a scary R word, but we need to keep talking about it.
But if we take the RFP for a rebal out momentarily, and look at converting the data that we have, presuming that it's accurate, just, and what is? presuming that it's accurate, just, and, and what is the cost? Because a rebal itself is $200,000. And so that's not something that we're probably going to be doing with everything that's going on right now?
Well, I think that's a bigger conversation and we might need to discuss it.
I hear what you're saying.
And I think we could have Trio here like we discussed just before COVID. We talked about having Allison and Brenda from Trio here. Um, and they were all set to come, but then COVID happened. I think to have that conversation, they're the right people to have that conversation with.
Okay.
Brenda is the technical person. Allison is the other side, kind of the cost and, you know, putting in the fight. So.
Excuse me. Not knowing a lot about this issue, knowing some of it, we've got to be very careful how we do this because those two systems don't talk well together.
Right.
And you don't want to lose things. So this is done very carefully and slowly because you could make an awful mess for the town if the value reaches the second one number and they're not supposed to be at that number.
Yeah.
You talk to people who use these systems, both systems. You've got to be very careful how this is done.
Oh, absolutely. But I, but I think we should, we should start finding out certainly what, how the conversion would work um, and, and look at it.
You have to make sure it will work.
Right. And we need to do that after this year's town meeting. I think we have enough to deal with right now.
Yeah, but I'm actually glad you brought it up because it, it leads us to a different conversation that we need to have, so.
That's right. So let's take this to the budget advisory board and see. Where's Steve's, or can I just ask? Steve, are these your numbers or have you met with?
I don't know.
Those are still last year's numbers.
They're from what they always bring up. I did get a phone call today from Country Fair and they're going to stop delivering what they're saying this week. I didn't get it up to date on the hand. He said, I hope, we probably have to find eight guys outside and then we'll figure out how we can fix it.
And while we're talking about Country Fair, I had heard from them also. And they made an error in calculation when they submitted their bid. They submitted a price of 27.8. The actual price is 23.850, so it's actually lower.
Oh, that's a nice.
There's a tiny bit of difference.
A little bit like that, I guess.
At least an indoor standard.
I was careful about.
I have a broad area.
So you've had all seven?
Yes, thank you.
I just have a question. Um, this is the first time I've looked at any of this and I know it's not a final copy and final version. It struck me though when I looked at, you know, like Article Three, it says it's the, explains the increase that, that what, what was increased and some of the others. But I'm assuming a lot of these others are no change from this current year. Is that correct?
That will be the case, yes. I haven't plugged in all the numbers yet, but the budget will reflect that.
I, I think it would be very helpful, particularly if somebody's not sitting in the town meeting and on a computer or studying this in advance. If everyone that is the same as last year states that. Or, or if it's only one or two that are different, you could do it in a, in a more efficient explanation that Articles X, Y, and Z were, were increases and the explanation explains why all others are the same or something like that and not having to repeat the same words at each article. If, if that's, if that's the case, I, I don't know. I just think it'd be very helpful to the whole meeting and the discussion to make a lot of clarity around because I, I'm, I'm sensing that there's a lot that's not changed because of all the uncertainty. There's no time to be spending money wildly on things and I commend you for that. And I commend the budget committee for that.
I think you all look good.
Well, I just think we have responsible caretaking and management of our town resources and thank you. All I'm talking about is just for clarity so everybody understands that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, thanks.
And just, yeah, I agree that a few notes on each article.
Yeah.
A little bit of writing to explain what it is and what's going on. And if someone's looking at it online, this may say some questions or something.
Well, and, and may deter attendance because that could be questionable for us. So if we can, and I would welcome an explanation in theory on every article just so that, so that we don't get into a situation where we can't fit everybody. So if we eliminate 95% of the concern or questions, maybe people are comfortable with the rest of the town attending at their behalf.
And if you could have an article on you where you're getting a lot of feedback and a lot of questions, maybe we can talk about that before we even get more answers.
Right.
Because if it's online at the meeting, they're also probably going to be tapped into the same articles. So if we could just do more research on it. There just seems to be one that sticks out that us know so that we can just research it a little bit more. Is, um, is Article Six the same number as was last year?
Um, ambulance will increase.
Oh, yeah.
Well, actually we still have the same price built in, but the, the fee did increase. Perhaps we didn't reach our appropriation last year. That's my guess.
The 75,000 again? And we exceeded that this year?
Um, 71,000. We sent me 1,000 last year. So we still have the same figure for ambulance. It could be a.
The city of that didn't ask for an increase.
I don't see.
They asked for an increase, but because we didn't spend as much.
And I think it's probably coming in ten years. It's been increasing the numbers.
Right. Just before crashing, right, ours is.
It's true.
There will be some changes with harbors and waters. We're finding that we're not appropriating enough for our marine room. So.
That will be taken because that's part of the spending.
Well, no, I mean, we're exceeding the budget. So we really do need to appropriate more of that. Not much, but there will be a little bit.
And Article Seven? Correct.
So right, Christine, right now, let's still come out of the, uh, who we, with, uh, you know, virus?
The Maury account.
That's where that money is appropriated from, it's from the.
The Maury account?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yes, I understand what you're saying. I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct.
So have we, have we, um, consumed the entire allocation of Maury account or is there money?
Uh, I'm not sure the answer to that. We can find out.
There's true, there's money in that now.
No, but like, do we get enough Maury's in to cover the outs?
Something I don't know. We have a lot of money, but we can find out.
You're one more vote.
So one more.
Which means there should be more.
There's two votes.
Are these Article Twelve, those requests for this year or we just go to last year's story?
Um, I don't know.
Those are.
The, the, what I find interesting, unless I missed something, maybe you remember David. New Hope for Women requested 525 last year.
Who's that?
New Hope for Women. They requested 525 last year and this year they requested 500. Is that correct?
I thought that one of them had a $25 increase, but I can't remember now what it was.
And Bath Area Seniors did not make the warrant last year, so that's, anyway.
The food bank asked for more too.
No, the food bank did not ask for more. Uh, when she met with us, she was sorry she didn't ask for more. And correspondence this week with, with Tim and Kate's. Last year, there was 131 evil serums for the food bank in Sweet Kitchen. I believe the number this year so far is 171.
West Bath resident.
West Bath resident.
Yeah.
So this is another one we'll discuss next year soon.
And is that, is that 171 residents pre-COVID or up to date?
That was permanent.
So to date, okay.
Is, is the budget advisory committee going to discuss an increase in that number?
That will be discussed, yes.
Yes, it does seem as though that that need may become greater as the states progress.
Well, I think she said our, our demand nearly doubled at some point year to date.
That was from 18 to 19, I think. 19 to 20 is a less of an increase as of April, but it's increased even more in the last three quarters.
Yeah. I'm also concerned a little bit about the sweetser.
Uh, they have more, more ways to get it up.
Yeah, they just bought some of that more than, um, yeah.
And they can, they can access money to the soup kitchen, pay the care.
Right. We had a big meeting today.
They get the care's money, I think it is.
And, um, to back up to 10, um, we have a, um, do, Steve's supposed to be with Christine. And we have to add in the semi.
Correct. Unless you want to take a portion of that out of the general rule. I mean, it, it's really a question of do you want to use the same figures and cut his budget request or add to it?
Well, and we should have still here. We weren't even going to have a discussion yet.
Yeah. Then I go.
Oh, and what does he see that as? I don't want to call it urgent need, but up and coming needs and even get rest.
Yeah, he said he was going to come into the office sometime this week. And I hope he can do it early next week.
Hopefully.
And then I'll have more information. But that's really what it is. And my guess is it's going to end up being a balance where some of the costs to Sabino comes out of his budget and, you know, we sort of.
Is this Slide 42 proposed for this year or is that last year?
These are last year's.
That's, that's what I thought.
I know there's a new one going in. Oh, it's true. I'm thinking of the traffic light. Oh, I know that was coming. I'm like, where's for a street light? I wonder, I never seen it.
That would make sense.
That's white.
Might have gone there in the dark. We're looking at same figure for garbage to garden. Um, they did request funds for a kiosk. I don't know if you want to include that this year or just give them a regular appropriation.
It's like the budget advisory committee could have that problem.
I've reached out to live a couple of times and I think what's going on, she's a little nervous about country meeting, but I asked her to go on to give us some of the writing. I could read and she has not got back to me the final answer yet.
Yeah, just for conversation purposes, a wooden kiosk would cost 1,600. A metal kiosk is 1,100. So if you wanted to consider either of those.
Is that where the stuff fell down at the town hall or is that something different?
Yes, that's assigned for the compost.
Okay.
So what article was that?
Um, when? Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Can I ask a question? Do you have any feeling for how the composting is, is being used? If it's a vast number of people are using it or a minute number of people?
It's popular. We're filling both togers.
But it's getting the compost back.
Um, we have some in reserve. Nobody's getting it yet. But theoretically, at some point, we could either set up our own bit or people could have access to compost that's made available based on what we contribute. So there's already some in reserve. I don't have those numbers with me tonight.
Yeah, I think you should stay with the town. Because if you, you don't want someone to take more than their fair share or anything of something. I think you go perhaps to the school garden.
It's also a pointy to that, right?
There could be, depending if you get more.
Yeah.
But if you just get what your, what the town is entitled to, there's no.
And cemeteries, is saying, are we doing the, um, are we doing the, that trust fund thing?
Oh, that's a whole process of public notices and, yeah. That's going to take a full year to get it done. So next budget year.
So he, I, I can give you feedback on Nick Holman Evil Prophet. He did get it approved. Um, I know he and his dad have gone out and surveyed, I think, half the cemeteries. They couldn't find them all. So there's nothing. But they, they had it, they, they didn't, so because there's some that are, I think, and they don't, and they need to know. Um, I think for them, there's one on Very Small Road. If you're heading out, it's up on, up on the top of the hill, but they think it's somebody's private property. So they don't know. Like actually, we bought that going with the cemetery and have it easy and access, so.
Just before their memorial.
There was always, um, you come up from Smalls Hill that had the, there's a white house. It got three or four dollars and they don't have it.
Oh, yeah. Across the millstone.
Yeah. So I think, I think, because I actually saw what I believe was a funeral years ago, like. But they don't, um, he couldn't find them all. So I told him if he came to the town, um, we could show them where, really where they were located. I told him there was one back, um, off the, I saw the one back on the Meadows, um, where Jerry Mitchell lives.
That's not a town cemetery.
That's a, that's a pride cemetery? I think it's on the map.
It may shows a cemetery, it's not a town cemetery.
So, well, so that's what he, he needs to figure out where he's supposed to be going, I guess. When you couldn't find it, what's going on in that, but he had.
Ron might have helped with that.
Talk to Maury.
Okay.
Because Maury goes.
Just whatever you get to this town.
He's heard his story.
Okay, that's a good, because I mean, because I really went and looked for him, I like, yeah.
Um, and we've talked about community agencies. Does anybody have any other comments about that? Okay. Um, patent-free library. This is the, um, there's a difference here between the 37,000 this year.
No, it's.
The request, is that lost you?
She came back with a lower number. Uh, I haven't got it with you, but I, I.
Oh, that's right, David.
$6740 increase as opposed to a $3,000 increase.
I'll have to look that up. David's correct. So that, not this year.
Have you been told to grab all the ones?
Well, I, so I, I'm, I'm not for putting this on the warrant, to be frankly honest. Um, there's, there's several people. There's, based upon the numbers I received back from the library and the calculations I came up with, there's about 387 people that are receiving the benefit of the $34,000, which essentially takes into roughly a $90 benefit that the other 80% of the town is funding. Um, I don't see the, the greater good.
There was a receiving of benefit. There was committee appointed two years ago, the overwhelming unanimous recommendation of the committee was to continue the association with the patent-free library. I think that we need to put that on the warrant if the town meeting wishes to, to defeat that, then that is up to the town.
I absolutely agree, but we need to educate them as to how the money's being spent and who's receiving the benefit.
I, I think we did a good job of that. I just think we need to put two different figures on there, one that we recommend and one that they want. Because I don't even, I don't recommend infunding something at the whole cost when they've been closed for six months.
Or that a small portion of the town is actually utilizing. It's not, we're not saying they can't go to the library. Or that a small portion of the town is actually utilizing, it's not, we're not saying they can't go to the library, we're just saying they have to buy their own card.
Well, we looked at ways to, last time, to, um, Madeline, what it would cost and could the town pay the ninety dollars for the people that wanted to use the library?
At sixty, I think.
You will copy out with putting two figures, and I get what you're saying, is that I noticed last year it created confusion.
Yes, so we had.
They don't know which figure to make a motion on. If somebody could stand up.
Understand.
Well, maybe, I'm not sure that was the initial problem, but if somebody knew to stand up and make a particular motion, an initial motion, then it would be clear.
Well, and anyway, and I asked Emily also, you know, based upon what's going on with COVID, I asked her specifically at our last meeting, what her plans were for class trips, and she felt that they weren't going to happen. So those kindergartners and first graders that traditionally go on their class trip to the library aren't going to be doing that.
So our kids aren't using the library?
So there's, there's roughly a hundred more kids, or a hundred more people that it's, that had access or used the library that aren't going to go there this year. Even though, even if it were open and it hasn't been open, so I, I just, that's.
But that's part of the discussion that the town meeting should have, and I think it's.
Sure, I'm more than happy to share that conversation.
But I think we also have to have, we have to have something on that we have been having to vote on.
Right, I just need to know what figure you want to put.
Zero.
If you put in, if you put in right now where the rules are, if you put in a number besides the number they requested, it won't be accepted at the library.
She said that, I go, if we sent you a twenty-five thousand dollar check, what would you do with it? She said it's in the back.
But isn't then that their choice?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just saying that if you put a different number in there, and it, and if it's lower, if it's higher, you probably accept it.
I just think.
But if it's lower, they won't, they won't accept it, and the town will not have a sixth.
This is the perfect year to make a statement to that library because we have, we're not using that. So what are we paying for, and for us to give them anything at all during this, knowing people aren't going there, I think is being common. So I think they can take what we, what we can vote on, or they take none.
I'm just, I'm just verifying that that's.
She said that, she just said at the meeting, I asked her.
I know, I'm just saying that's.
Yeah, that's okay.
And maybe would you recommend maybe, I don't know what the figure would be, David?
I'd recommend zero, I mean, I, as, as, as my position on this is, is I don't want to fund any of it, if someone wants to get a library card, they can go get one, most of this, I shouldn't say most, a large portion of these books are available electronically. So people aren't physically going there anyway, and we're not having kindergarten or first grader going on a class trip this year. I asked Emily purposely in our last meeting, what were they doing with classrooms and they're not having them?
Thirty-four thousand dollars.
It is.
You know, Peter went through this, when he was, he, he railed against this for several years, and, and he got totally frustrated. And what stopped him was three hundred and eighty-seven people, or whatever the number is they quote now, he questioned those numbers, but.
I don't think, I actually don't think there's that many using, I, I personally think, I was being generous in my calculations on what they gave me. I don't think, and that's including all of the students that go to the library from the school. If you take that out of the equation, I think we're substantially lower than three hundred and eighty-seven people.
I wonder with COVID, if how many of our kids now have computers that didn't have computers prior to COVID?
Well, I, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think it's outrageous what they do to the towns.
It's blackmail.
It is.
And, and.
A demand nine percent increases ridiculous.
But, but when, when they tell you that if you don't pay their issued subpoena number that they want, nobody from West Bath can use the library without paying for it personally.
But that's okay, we're not saying they can't go.
It is not, it is, to my, to my point, it is not okay to tell people who live in this town that they have no access to a public library.
And I'm not comfortable paying three hundred and eighty-seven people a ninety dollar benefit when eighty percent of our town is paying for them to get that benefit.
Then that is exactly what the argument is.
Okay.
So whatever the recommendation is, and I think we should go with what the Budget Advisory Committee says for the recommendation, and then people vote.
I'm not voting for that.
And there, this might be a case where the article shows a selectmen's recommendation that's split, and that's okay. There's nothing wrong with that, and then any of you as individuals can stand up and speak to why you voted a certain way, and that's.
Totally prepared to vote.
Appropriate to tell me.
If you get that in here, and people can see it ahead of time, they can voice, send you all the questions they want, and if this is going to be a huge issue, we will, we will be prepared.
Yeah, it will be.
But, but you know, let the town decide, I'm, I'm all for whatever comes out of that vote, we move forward with, but I, I personally am not comfortable funding something that, A, we're not using, there's a demand payment, it's not, when you say patent-free library, that seems to be contradictory to how we're using it.
Do you have any idea what the, if we're paying the same rate like Bath is, per population of whatever?
It's tabulated by, I think it is, I think it's, you, there's a, based upon, it's a per person fee, based upon your resident, I think it was like seventeen twenty-four or something, if I'm not mistaken.
It's a per capita, all towns pay the same per capita.
Everyone pays the same per person, but then you pay by your resident count.
So, so if, if we did zero, I could go get a library card for ninety, about sixty?
So if you, and I said that, so we funded all those, we actually saved fifteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Why don't you do that? I don't feel like I have to fund somebody's library card.
Well, that's, that's, I agree.
So if you're going to pay for a library card, I want sixty dollars off my register.
But I, 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 I actually, I want the hundred, that, that, that the three hundred and eighty-seven people are getting, because that's the equivalent to what they're receiving from a town fee.
Ninety times, yeah, that's, ninety times three eighty-seven gives you that number.
So, yeah, it's just, so ninety bucks a person, so, so let's see, you are getting a ninety dollar benefit that you and I are paying for.
Do what, David?
Call it four hundred, uh, four hundred residents, right?
Yeah.
Times six.
Is there any way you could actually take a tally for a year?
They won't, they don't do, they don't even track half the books that are taken out, I asked that question. They say I don't have a way to determine some of the book usage, like, then how do we know they're actually going?
It must be the number of people with library cards.
But they didn't, they couldn't even determine.
Who, how many of those?
So you have thirty first graders from West Bath go in on a field trip.
And then kindergartners.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be nice to put that money in the school library.
I'd rather use it somewhere else, if we're not using it as a town collectively, I think it should go to a town collective expense.
Can we bring Peter back for this?
The, the, the issue is, to my mind, is whether or not we are going to give people access to a public library that they don't have to pay for. There would be plenty of months out of my, in my life when I could not have afforded sixty dollars for a library card. It just would not have happened. So that, I think, is the gist of the argument. Do we have a public library available to the people of the town?
That hasn't been available for six months.
But, but we pay for it.
But it will, it will be again someday, and.
It's only, it's gonna, it's gonna open up shortly, she said, and I, in whatever emails from, they continue to pay the salaries.
They have to pay their employees.
Lights, whatever, water fees, all those places.
But then, then if we paid for the use, we should extend those memberships well into next year, since we paid through December of this year. We should have free membership until next June anyway, so what's the conversation?
The, the, the conversation is that they're, they're going to dictate, and, and we have no wiggle. I, I, I believe what you say, Madeline, too, that they ought to be available for anybody who wants it. And, but this is, the way they handle it is really ridiculous.
I agree that they are very high-handed, and their refusal to enter into discussion about changing their bylaws, I think is extraordinarily high-handed. I am not in any way supporting the policies of the patent-free library, I'm supporting people's need for access to a library card.
And they also have a set fee, there's not a five and under fee and a sixty-five and over fee, it's sixty.
They are a private corporation, they can set their fees however they wish to do so.
So, but if, but I, if we're going to pay, if we're going to, I'll say subsidize, I don't want to pay, for, for the, the kindergarten that goes there three times, or, or to be going because of a class trip, you know, we're paying for an annual.
Well, go back to, go back to the whole premise of who's using it, though. If it's primarily the school kids that are using it, we could put the money to the school library.
Absolutely, we could build a most fabulous library at the school.
And that would cover a lot of the needs.
We have no room for.
I'll say on my property, you can put a bigger one.
So, so what was the question?
I don't know why they put a bigger library in the school, there's, there's no room.
Oh, you mean, okay, so.
And one of the.
They can improve the one they have, for sure.
Yeah.
Sure, or, 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 and, and improve the garden mower, or whatever else the thirty-seven thousand dollars is going to pay. I'd rather go to our town and community and be used by the mass, not the select few.
This is an issue that is going to be solved by a vote, and it's going to be solved tonight.
Oh, my God.
But next Thursday should be fun, too.
Um, then he's going to boost.
We, we won't serve refreshments.
And you're going to turn the AC off or the heat off, whatever.
Not going to heat on.
Yeah, depends on the weather.
Um, and Article fourteen, what are we doing here?
Those are just the lines that we carry over.
Okay.
They don't lapse in the surplus.
Do we need anything, do we need any additional funds into general assistance?
No, we do not.
Okay.
We have, we have plenty of carryover.
Good.
We're doing fine, we haven't even had an invoice, as far as I know, this fiscal year. So I think that it's probably going to fall in line with previous years.
And Article fifteen, uh, long-term capital improvement fund, are we, are we still planning catch-up with that, David? Yeah, so are we, are we trying to get?
Actually, Bob, where is on the investment committee?
Are we still, where, where are we on, on that three consecutive catch-up payments?
The, 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 I haven't looked at it in the last minute, but roughly six hundred and thirty thousand dollars is in the fund. And we had spent, the primary big expenditure was the salt shed, our contribution to the salt shed, which was three hundred and seventy thousand, I think. Salt shed cost more than that, but that's the way it worked out. And there's never been any rebuilding of the fund. When the whole fund was set up on the initial thing, it was that, that as it was spent down, we could replenish at a rate of like fifty thousand a year, because that had a modest to negligible effect on the mill rate. And it never has been done.
So this won't bring it back up?
This should be the first time since, since that big expenditure that it would come back.
I thought we were doing three, I thought we were doing a catch-up this year.
Well, there was, the catch-up was going to be a bigger number to put it back where it.
That's what I thought, didn't we talk about doing a three?
And we can still do that.
And I think that.
That's why I'm seeking to leave that.
This may not be the year to do that, because of all the other things going on.
It's with the library money to do it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jane.
But, but I, that's my recollection, with, the committee's not met since we had that meeting here back in, gotta be January or sometime.
But we're still on schedule to do a payment to catch-up.
Yes, and that, I think that's a fair, fair thing for you to do. I, I can't speak for the whole committee, but that's what I think we would all agree to.
I would like to see us do that, myself. Um, and Article sixteen is, um, routine?
Yeah, the rest of them are pretty routine.
Just kind of housekeeping.
Including the ones for the fishway and the taking of ALIs. And then the final articles in the town portion are twenty-nine thirty, which address the rain, the sordidness, you know.
Those are the ones that.
There's a typo thing.
Yeah.
The federal government, three years ago, decided to call ALIs river herring.
Yes.
So we should change these articles to river herring.
Okay, that's, yes, I'll do that, that makes sense. Um, can we put in parentheses, ALIs, so that people orally know the river?
We know that.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Just so that they know.
Well, they, people don't know, I wouldn't say river herring, why they know ALIs, so. And I wish that I myself had my own license.
Sure, that has anything to do with lives, so.
So is, is he ale?
It's the ale that we don't like.
You can call me anything if I can get twenty-five hundred dollars a pound in my fish catch, anything.
Something you keep in the back of your mind when you're looking at the money articles, is that this warrant doesn't include the seventy-two five for last year's lighting project.
For last year's what, to mine?
The LED lighting project.
Oh, lighting, I think you said lighting.
So just keep that in mind as a figure that is not being appropriated this year, that was appropriated last year.
And where, where is that on here?
Well, it's not on here because it was on last year's.
It's just a carryover?
No, it was a one-year appropriation.
It was a one-year appropriation, oh.
Yeah, my point being that since we're not appropriating that figure this year, theoretically, it can go to another line or several lines, and it wouldn't affect the mill rate. So it would be the same.
Or we could put another payment into our.
Well, it's, it's just a swap over.
Yeah, I mean, just something there in mind, if you're concerned about the mill rate.
Do we have a payment due on the fire truck? And where is it coming out of?
Well, we voted last year to take that out of the investment account, so that's what we're going with.
Should we do that?
The fire truck was on the surplus, wasn't it?
On the surplus, I think.
That's on the surplus.
It was going to be on.
I'll double check, but you don't have.
The vote last year was authorized a selectman to, to pay for it in previous boards.
Yeah, I brought this warrant, but I did bring that.
Is this close to bringing my, it'll report.
Well, we'll figure it out.
I've had it, do you have last year's annual report?
I most certainly do. That's what they need to say.
It's got a garbage can full of stuff.
I don't care what you say about me, I'm prepared.
While she's looking for that, I have a totally different question, where does the county, what we pay the counties come in?
Sorry, what was the question?
What do we pay?
Like those sheriff's.
For county government, sheriff department, where does all that come in?
That comes out of, uh, what do we call it?
Since we had to call the sheriff's in crazy business a couple times through.
We have, we have no choice in that one, we have to pay whatever they.
It comes out of special assessment, which is not appropriated, it comes out of surplus. But that's the line, it's, um, special assessment county tax.
Well, it shouldn't be by the surplus. We, essentially, we.
Well, I mean, meaning it's something that we don't vote on.
Right, it's, we have to pay it by the law.
Correct. Would you like me to read the article aloud?
Yes, please.
The state of the town will allow this selectman to purchase a new fire truck and to transfer funds from the investment account for any payment which may be due in the two thousand nineteen dash twenty fiscal year. But why don't we think we voted on that differently, about taking it out of our surplus?
That's what we voted on.
I can also read from the minutes. No, I, I thought we did, we talked about that at a different meeting, so.
That's what the town meeting.
Didn't you say you were going to pay for it on the surplus?
That's what the discussion was.
Somebody should have read the article before we voted on it last year.
I think that could be not actually.
Um, can we?
Well, the difference being that last year, the financial situation was totally different.
Right.
And we also found out after town meeting, there was bull money.
I understand, but from an administrative standpoint, I'm just saying that's what we voted on, right? If you choose to do something different, we're going to need another warrant article.
Correct.
We're going to have to wait to take delivery of the apparatus until after town meeting.
So can we take it out of the investment fund and then we?
And just line item transfer?
You can do that.
Or what?
The article needs to state that very specifically, and Sally can help us. So we would have a, uh, we would have a warrant article that would authorize the taking of X number of dollars to replenish, to reimburse the investment account from a fraud, and that would specify that that would come from the general surplus.
And that cleared a lot.
Do we have enough money right now to pay the fire truck? I don't think we do.
I don't, I think it's.
We don't have enough to pay for it right now, anyway.
Well, you said you'd actually take the money out of the investment account in order to cover it. We have enough money.
Yes.
There is enough.
What's the, what's the fire truck's bill?
Six, couple bucks, six.
Five, seventy-five, five, sixty-five.
I think he also needs plus.
We have like six thirty and change in that investment account.
So, but, um, as I recall, um, Chief.
So, but, um, as I recall, um, chief being indicated that there would be some further expenses to.
We, we, uh.
To get the place.
We allowed more money, um, although we, we haven't allowed, town meeting allowed, as John was allowing, about twenty thousand dollars or so.
For hoses and the.
Well, not just hoses, for other, other, to finish off the truck.
Put tires on it?
And the tires.
Well, you got three tires, you have to buy that for.
Because there is, there's always a need to finish off when it gets here, this is, you've got to transfer stuff from one truck to the other truck, and that costs.
Is that another article that we've, is that inappropriate already?
Isn't it in, in his budget somewhere, isn't it?
It could be, I have to look it.